Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise with a prayer and a pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Lee Bowman, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votche.
Mr. Campbell, Ms. Harris, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Lee Bowman, Mr. Long, Ms. Lemoine, Ms. Dysart, Ms. Rodney, Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Warner, and Ms. White is not with us tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. First item on the agenda tonight is a presentation by the St. Bernard Autism Awareness Crew. And with us tonight, we have Danny Dysart. Would you please come up? And other members of the, um, the crew, if you would, Danny? If you could introduce those members who were able to be with us tonight.
The other board members here will be tonight are Ms. Wanda Alcon, as well as Judge Kim Jones and Mr. Alvin Jones. The other board members couldn't be here tonight, but we, uh, we are still strong with the three of, three or four of us here today. Uh, also, um, we have one of our, uh, campers from the Crew Summer Camp, Adam Jones. So Adam's here with us today as well. So thank you for giving me the time to, uh, just give a short presentation to you all. The Crew Summer Camp was something that was started last year in the summer of 2022. And the goal of this Crew Summer Camp was to provide an opportunity to kids and families in St. Bernard and the school district, uh, that, you know, those with certain exceptionals that are unable to attend a traditional summer camp, would have an opportunity to go to a summer camp where, uh, they can have the services and be afforded the opportunity to do things and, and have a normal summer camp experience. And so with the school district partnering with the crew, uh, we were, we put the, put it together pretty quickly last summer, uh, you know, in a matter of forty-five or sixty days, and it was a one-week camp. And so, uh, building on that, what we wanted to do was, is we wanted to, uh, you know, expand that. We want to build on it year after year, and we're able to do that this year. So, uh, we've, we're able to do it this past June for two weeks with the school district. It was held at Mira Elementary School. We had about forty campers over two weeks. Uh, and so we were able to expand not only the number of students that were able to attend it, but also a ton, uh, expand the time and the services and the activities. And so, um, you know, we wanted to be here tonight to do a couple of things. First, um, we are here to provide a check to the school district, um, for the Crew Summer Camp for 2023 in the amount of forty thousand dollars. And that is in connection with us, um, supporting this, uh, program. Uh, we are one hundred percent behind it. Um, us, our board members, our families have nothing but great things to say about the camp, the counselors, and all those that were able to put it together. With that, we couldn't have done it, obviously, without the school district, certainly Ms. Votche, everyone here tonight. But in particular, we'd like to recognize a few people. First, um, uh, Joseph Malone and Allison Grow, both in the SED department. They have been instrumental in allowing Crystal Kennedy and Emily Burrow to really, you know, spread their wings and kind of do what they need to do. So I want to thank personally Joe and Allison for really allowing us to do this camp and to really allow Crystal and Emily to really just go forward with it as, I guess you would say, the president or vice president of the Crew Summer Camp, um, for lack of a better term. And so Allison actually has really done a great job in putting together sort of a collage. She's got a collage of a lot of photographs and things, uh, from this past summer.
You want to see Adam, he's right here at the bottom, standing.
And if I can call Crystal up for a moment, uh, At, we, we did as a board, we got some nice flowers and a card for her and Emily. And, uh, Adam's going to help me give the flowers over to Crystal, so, thank you. And I'm going to put her on the spot here, I know.
What a gentleman. I think his parents have raised him right. Great going, Adam.
And, and I know she probably doesn't want to get up, but I am going to put Crystal on the spot. I'm going to give her just a few minutes to, to, to tell us a little, just a little bit about what the camp was like for those two weeks and some of the things that they were able to do with the, uh, with the kiddos. So go ahead, Crystal, thank you again.
Yeah, thanks for making me talk. But thank you for your generous donation, for your idea, for your drive to start this camp. Last year, it was wild, and we got it done really quickly this year. We really got to dig our feet in and, uh, make it just a spectacular experience for the kids. We doubled the number of students that we served, we doubled the, you know, the weeks. But we also, my, the counselors get as much out of this as the kids. So it really is a labor of love. Um, we added some extra activities this year. We did cooking every day, um, we did art projects, we did, we had a glow party. We spent some time at the new, um, splash pad at Val Reese. It really was just spectacular. And the thing that I love most about the camp is that we get to see these kids being their authentic selves. So you get to see all the wild and fun and just amazing that, um, that these children are. So, and I do invite you next year, you know, if you're not busy, in the beginning of June, come and visit us. And, um, we just couldn't do it without this community, this board, and obviously, um, your organization.
And again, you know, Emily Burrow, who, um, is not here tonight, but again, she has worked hand-in-hand with Crystal in putting on the camp, and we couldn't, can't say enough good things about Emily. One thing I did forget to mention about the camp is that obviously, uh, you know, for a lot of the younger kids, it's an opportunity to go to, to a traditional sort of summer camp experience. But, um, kids like Adam, those that are older, uh, you know, they were, they were able to attend the camp and almost kind of as counselors. So they got to, you know, not only have fun, but have some added responsibility and, and be camp counselors for some of the younger kids. And I know that that was a tremendous experience for, you know, Adam, all the old, older campers. And, uh, to, to see them interact with the young kids and, and really have fun all summer was, was something that we were really, really able to enjoy, uh, through, through pictures. So, um, again, thank you so much for the opportunity to, to partner with you all to do this camp and for, uh, Crystal, Emily, Joe, Allison, for everything that they've done to really make this, you know, be a success and to keep building upon in the future. So thank you again.
So you have the check, Danny? Would you want to present it?
Yeah, sure, I'll come present to Ms. Votche.
Well, actually, you can give it to, come, come this way. Sarah, if you want to come take a picture, you can present a top board present. There we go. All right. Just do it. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Danny, wait, before you leave, Danny, Danny Dysart. On behalf of the board, um, I, I would, I would like to say thank you, Danny, for your drive and to the autism crew. Y'all have done a wonderful job year in and year out with fundraisers to provide funds to, um, to start this camp. And I know last year we, we started, like you said, just a few days, um, before the camp began. And then this year, we were able to grow. And I'm sure with these additional funds, we'll have to talk numbers, Ms. Votche, but hopefully we can grow the camp to larger and more time for our students. And it's, it's just a wonderful thing. And, um, you know, to provide the opportunity for the, the, um, the junior counselors and, and the, and the campers and, um, everyone who, all the students who are, who do come to the camp. And I just want to give our thanks to the crew. And, um, Crystal, thank you for all you did. I know you, last year, like you said, it was kind of like rush, 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 but we, you know, y'all got it together. And Allison and Joe and, um, everyone involved. And so we thank y'all very much, and it is, is just a great, um, a great thing that we're providing the camp for, um, these students. And, um, it's wonderful to see them happy there and just having a good time, so. Ms. Votche?
Yeah, and just to echo that, you know, the school system or no entity can do anything alone. And we are very blessed here in St. Bernard Parish. There are many, many different groups and organizations that contribute greatly, whether it be monetarily with their, or with their time, um, given to our kids in many different ways. But your particular group, the Autism Awareness Crew, has done an unbelievable job within a very, very short period of time in bringing awareness to the community of our students who, um, are in, in our special education program. And not only have you worked with the school system, but I constantly see y'all out there with the Sheriff's Department helping to make sure that our deputies and law enforcement offices are very aware when they, you know, approach our students or any adults who, um, would be in need of special services, that they know what to do at that point. So it is, you have made such an impact in our entire community. I mean, I've never seen an organization grow so quickly, so fast, and make such a significant impact. I mean, giving us a check for forty thousand dollars to help continue this program is huge, but I know that's just one of many, many, many things that y'all do year-round. Now, our people in special education, and especially Crystal Kennedy, you know, done an unbelievable job in putting this together. And what you mentioned before is just so important. Because as our children grow, as our students grow into becoming adults, like Adam here, they're given more and more responsibilities and really are a major part of our program and can come and give back. Just like our performing arts crew, when we see alumni come back and perform, um, in the productions that we have, then we're going to have our alumni in this community come back and give back and mentor young people within their community and talk with them about their, um, experiences and their growth. So it, it's a, a really, I guess, unless you see it, it's really hard to believe. You know, we've got the Special Olympics, this particular community, the, where we all gather around that. But this is now a specialized group here where we're expanding activities more than just one day into a summer camp program. And you're right, the possibilities are endless. So we want to thank you, thank the Autism Awareness Crew. And just say you've got our tremendous support in whatever you do. If you need anything, you let us know, and we've got a relationship now that I think all we can do is just grow and prosper, as they say. So thank you, and please give our thanks to every member of your organization.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Votche.
Anyone else? Oh, okay, Ms. Lemoine?
I just wanted to, again, thank you, Danny, for your leadership and the entire Autism Awareness Crew and congratulate you. I know, um, several months ago, you, earlier this year, you received the St. Bernard Chamber of Commerce Citizen of the Year Award for your outstanding work with the Autism Awareness Crew. And you took that as an opportunity to truly, when you accepted that award, educate the public and our business community about the great work that, that you all are doing. So thank you for your vision, your passion, and, uh, keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine, and, um, I appreciate the words, but, you know, it, our board is tremendous. I mean, our board is, is all, you know, community members here, parents, and, um, you know, at the risk of leaving, see if I can go on the spot here. So Melinda Luna, Jeff Vega, Elizabeth Dotreev, Lisa Cott, Ms. Alcon, Ms. Wanda Alcon, Judge Kim Jones, Mr. Alvin Jones, Lisa Armstrong, um, and Abby Donnelly. And so, um, you know, all of them, I mean, Abby put together, we had a Crew Summer Camp, uh, excuse me, a Crew Swimming Party this past weekend where they came to, uh, you know, swim at the Buccaneer Swim Club. Uh, we had a tremendous turnout there, and Abby put the whole thing together. She did a tremendous job. Melinda does great with our quarterly and/or monthly sort of parent training sessions, Mom Nights Out, Lego Club. It just goes on and on. Jeff has been instrumental in working with the Sheriff's Office with the Help Me Home Program. So everybody across the board, on our board, has done tremendous work. And all the things that Ms. Votche said about us being the community, it's really just a tremendous collective effort from everybody on that board, because everybody's committed and driving to one goal, and that is just to make, uh, resources and things better for families and students here in St. Bernard Parish. So without them, we wouldn't really be able to do all this. So thank you.
Okay, Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I just would like to circle back to what you said about expanding the program. I would really love to see that program get expanded. I know it's a lot, I know it's a lot that we're taking on. But, um, I would love to see it go for another week and maybe add some more students next year. I think that would be fabulous, if we can pull that off. And it just goes to show that, you know, the St. Bernard Parish school system, the innovation that we, that we pull off here is unbelievable. I mean, this is a program that started last year. It's expanded to where it is. We've partnered up with other groups, we've partnered up with other groups to, for innovation in, in our, in our school system. And it's, it's just really great to see. I don't know whether it's the ecosystem, or the synergy, or something in the water. I don't know what it is, but we do a great job of innovation at this school system, and it's really great to see. So I just want to congratulate everybody on this program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner, anyone else? Okay, well, thank you again, Danny, and thank you, crew, and all the members who were able to be with us. And to the members who aren't with us, we do appreciate this very generous donation. And also, we know that, uh, every year you do fundraisers, and the Derby Day is like a big fundraiser, and it's become a beautifully, was, it is a beautiful event, and it's a community event. It's, it's great to see so many people participate. And I know it's a lot of hard work from the crew of autism to put it on and to, uh, work for those funds. So thank you very much, we appreciate it, thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the update on third and fourth grade summer literacy instruction. Good evening.
Good afternoon. We had our summer literacy instruction for our third and fourth grade students who were not proficient on a component of the DIBELS-8 assessment, um, called the MACE, which is a comprehension assessment.
I'm sorry, can you talk a little bit more into the mic?
Sorry, thank you, it kind of echoes, thanks. So we had our third and fourth grade literacy instruction at Mira Elementary. The students came for thirty hours of literacy instruction, it actually ended up being about forty hours. And they worked on reading comprehension skills, they worked on improving their decoding, because of course that also affects reading comprehension. And at the end of our program, we assessed at the beginning and end to see what type of growth we had. Now, again, this is over a two-week period. Of our one hundred and twenty-one third grade students, thirty-five of, out of the one hundred and twenty-one are now proficient that were below level. Of our twenty-nine L students, um, twenty-one of the twenty-nine showed growth. And five of them are now proficient. And these are students who are in our district who are not, um, English-speaking students yet, okay? Our SED students, we had thirty-four of our one hundred and twenty-one third grade students. Eighteen of them showed growth, and eight of our thirty-four special education students are now proficient. Fifty-eight regular education third grade students, thirty-eight of the fifty-eight showed growth. And twenty-two, almost half of our regular education students are now proficient. So, uh, again, over two weeks, that's a great success for us, for our students. Fourth grade, we had a hundred and fifty-seven fourth grade students that came to our program. And seventy-nine of the hundred and fifty-four are now proficient. Our L students that were fourth grade, thirty-four out of the one hundred and fifty-seven students are L learners. Twenty-four of them showed growth, and eleven of the thirty-four are now proficient. SED for our, uh, fourth grade students, forty-two out of the one hundred and fifty-seven students were special education students. Thirty-two of the forty-two showed growth, and seventeen of the forty-two special education students are now proficient. Our regular education fourth grade students, we had eighty-one. Seventy-three of the eighty-one showed growth. And fifty-one of the eighty-one fourth grade students who came to our program are now at the proficient level. So again, this was over two weeks, and the students will be assessed again in the fall. Our third and fourth grade students incoming will again take the MACE as a part of, um, our literacy screener at the beginning of the year.
Okay, any questions or discussion, Ms. Harris?
Thank you so much. So I'm curious to know how are we going to use the data that you all have from this along with the LEAP data to inform our instruction for the school year?
Absolutely. So one of the things that is new this year is we have five new literacy coaches, which I'm super excited about, um, and really focusing on those interventions for our students. So starting out, those students will have an individual reading plan. And we will work to target the skills that, again, that they were not proficient in, even if they're proficient now, to make sure they stay at that level. And again, the LEAP assessment for ELA is all reading comprehension. So it correlates as far as the type of skill. It may not correlate as far as the rigor, if that makes sense. Because this is a screener, and that's an assessment, so a different type of test. You're welcome.
Anyone else? Ms. Rodney?
You mentioned that it would be five, five new literacy coaches. How are they going to be spread out amongst the parish as far as the kids go?
Sure, so how are they spread out? They're going to be spread out among all of our elementary schools, and also to help at some of our middle schools, too. It is going to be based on our, what I want, I don't want to say topic, but for examples, if we're doing DIBELS screening, they will be there supporting the teachers with that. If we're doing intervention plans, they will be there to support the teachers to help them with the interventions within the classroom, to really zone in our interventions. In our lower grades, from pre-K to third grade, we're going to be starting with a new intervention program. And so that, it's very scripted, and, um, it pinpoints the skills that the students need. So that is all their, you know, what their real focus is. Anything with, um, response to intervention or intervention practices and strategies, and really giving the teachers support so that they feel success, too, when they're doing it, when they have kids that are struggling and they feel like they're not making headway with the kids. You're welcome.
I have a question on, um, with the five new literacy coaches, and I saw them, they were busy today.
They were busy, they're gearing up.
So, um, so, and I just want to say before I ask the question, I think the two-week program had amazing results.
Absolutely.
Amazing.
Absolutely. Our teachers worked really hard.
Yes.
And so did our students, of course.
They must have, I mean, they, they really showed growth, which is wonderful. So with our five new literacy coaches, these are new in addition to what we had last year? Or when you say new, they're?
So it's, it's new positions. We did have one last year, Ms. Maggie Rusal, who now is an assistant principal for us. So someone took her place, but four new ones.
So we've added resources or?
Yes.
Instructional coaches for this purpose?
Yes, to support our, um, our literacy initiative, you know, all of our literacy initiatives that are coming up. And also to support our teachers who really, you know, when they're working with students who are struggling, and you get stuck and you don't know, like, what can I do else? I've done all of these things, to be a support for those teachers also. And also with the data analysis of how we're doing with intervention and also where we need to go next to even improve our scores even more.
That's wonderful. And so this will be a poll-out program, or, um, as far as the literacy coaches go?
The literacy coaches will push into the classrooms to support the teachers.
Okay, great. And then, and you mentioned the, um, testing in the fall. When would that take place?
So it has to be within the first thirty days of school.
Okay.
Yeah, so the first thirty days. Typically, we like to do it towards the end of August, beginning of September, because our students have to get acclimated with their teachers and the classroom and procedures first.
Okay, will you bring forth those results at that time?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, great. I hope they have the continued growth, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Do we need, uh, that was just a report, right? Okay, thank you so much, and all the work you do, and, uh, the new literacy coaches, we wish them well, and I know they're working hard already. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is an approval to incorp, incorporate the report of the General Committee Meeting Minutes of July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Thank y'all for coming, excuse me, into the minutes of the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three regular monthly meeting. There's a motion, Mr. Long, is there a second? Second, my Ms. Lemoine. And we did have someone sign off that would like to speak on, um, this item. Mr. Lance Rodney, if you would, please come up.
Yeah, just more of a question.
Uh, if you would, speak into the microphone, thank you.
Lance Rodney Violet, uh, was just more of a question. I didn't see on the website where you guys uploaded the minutes to the, uh, the website. I mean, what happened with that? The vote, the motin, uh, the vote and the motion, the motion and the vote. Everything else that you guys voted on, like the, uh, Sebastian, Sebastiawar, you had a vote, a motion and a vote on that, and then you had the insurance, you had a vote on that and motion and a vote on that, but I didn't see the Juneteenth motion and vote on the website.
Are the minutes completed for the committee meeting yet, Ms. Votche?
Was it a delay or something?
Ms. Votche, were they completed?
So the last meeting, you know, I think?
Yeah.
So those meetings, for three months long, let's incorporate the meeting of that night into tonight's minutes.
So is it, does it work like that in every meeting? Because, you know, like, whenever you do a vote, a motion and a vote, you know, I thought it was supposed to be on the minutes from that last meeting on the web. But it'll show, it'll show the minutes, because it didn't show the minutes. If you look on that and you hit on agenda, you'll see what you have.
Okay, first of all, are, hold on, hold on, okay. That's your comment you make, I'll, I'll respond to it. I'm looking at the committee meetings right now, and I do see a motion and a vote. And that's going to be published and incorporated into the regular meeting from tonight. So there is a, a motion and a vote on these, I'm reading them right here.
What I'm just saying is for the public, for the public to see, like, if I was, if I didn't come to the meeting, and I'm looking on the website, and I want to see what happened, who voted on what, besides looking at the video, because videos could be deleted.
So it's going to be posted on it when we approve this tonight, this committee meeting. Then there'll be a vote of the regular board, and then all of that will be posted on the website.
Okay.
Because the committee meeting minutes are incorporated into the regular board meeting.
I just saw every other motion and vote, I just didn't see that motion and vote on the website. If you go on the website, you'll see it.
Okay.
You'll see what I'm talking about.
Right here.
I'll show you.
All right, that's fine.
All right, thank you. Okay, um, we did, Mr. Long, did you have something?
Oh, no, no, no. I just wanted to make a note that I did see it in the minutes.
You saw it in the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, that's it.
Ms. Dor, Ms. Votche cleared that up.
All right, so we have, um, do we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes of the committee meeting?
Yes, I think I made a motion.
Mr. Long, you making a motion? Okay, there's some, oh, right, okay. Okay, there's a, oh, right, okay, there's a motion by Mr. Long and a seconded by, seconded by Ms., I mean, motion by Mr. Long, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any further discussion on the motion or any questions on the minutes? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Okay, next item is an approval of the regular monthly meeting minutes of May 23, 2023 as published on July 14, 2023.
So moved.
There's a motion by Mr. Warner. Seconded by Ms. Jackson. Any discussion on this motion? There being none, please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you. Next item is an approval of the special meeting, the alternate placement appeal. The minutes of June 13, 2023 is published on July 14, 2023. There's a motion by Ms. Jackson. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Okay, there being none, please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item is an approval of the special meeting, the employee contract negotiations minutes of June 13, 2023 as published on July 14, 2023.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Warner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you. Next item of personnel changes for July 2023. Good evening, Ms. Pritchett, you have been busy.
Good evening, yes, we've been busy and I just want to say we are still hiring. So if we have anybody out there that's interested in becoming a teacher, has a bachelor's degree from an accredited university, they need to go online at our human resources page on our website, apply and I will talk to them, meet with them about pathways that we can get that done. So we are still hiring teachers, we're working on parents, bus drivers, substitutes, and I'm available to talk to anyone who is interested in becoming a teacher. We're especially right now looking for special education teachers. We also need a Spanish teacher and a few middle school teachers, English, science, and math. So if you know of anybody, send them my way. I'm ready to talk to them. Then I have the minutes and remember that the, the new hires since the last meeting are highlighted in yellow. And one thing I do want to point out is that we do have a retirement, Tanya Lambert. She is one of our very, very, very long-time kindergarten teachers. She's been here with us for a long time and she made a difficult decision, but she will be retiring. Yes, so she will be more than missed.
I want to echo those same thoughts. Tanya has, I don't know how many years she's been with us, but it's very, very many. And she was a wonderful teacher. You could see, you know, she just had that heart for those kindergarten children and she did a wonderful, wonderful job and she will be surely not.
Definitely.
But happy retirement to Tanya. I'd like to echo the same sentiments. Tanya has been with us for a very long time. I think I taught her husband way back when. Her children have all been through our school system and in fact, her son is the band director, current band director at Sherman High School. Wonderful and she herself has made a major contribution, so we wish her well.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Harris?
Superintendent, you may know more about this. So recently, the legislature passed some different requirements for educators. Can we utilize that with special education or is it only, and thinking about the associate's degree thing that they did, that I'm not necessarily keen on, but I didn't know if that's...
There, there's room for anyone who has an associate degree, but it must be in the content area in which they would try teaching, they must be enrolled in a four-year program, but they are excluded from all special education classes.
But I wasn't sure if there was that caveat and I didn't know if that might would be an area with Spanish maybe that maybe we could try to find someone with that background.
That might be in one area, you know, that would be beneficial, especially, I know we have many native Spanish speakers and we have been searching for them as well. So if we have anybody out there who have those credentials, we would more than welcome, you know, welcome them in to speak with them and see what we can do in that area. I can do many things, we can teach many areas. Spanish is not one of them. Just like I can't go in and drive a bus either.
Right.
Okay, are there any other questions? Can you rename the positions you're looking for, please?
I'm looking for sped, actually, I'm looking for two sped significant disabilities, one elementary, one high school. Then I need about five sped mild moderates to place mostly at Sherman High.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Anybody else? I'm sorry, but there's talking, Mr. Fernandez?
Yeah, could y'all?
Could y'all go in the other one, please? I'm sorry, it's, we can hear y'all. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pritchett. Okay, next item on the agenda is the approval of the long-range strategic plan, action plan. There was a recommendation by the committee. And you have a copy of that in your folder as we had in the committee meeting. Are there any questions or is there a motion at the time? There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine to accept the long-range strategic plan, there's a second by Mr. Long. Any discussion?
I have, I have a question. Um, we will receive updates on how we're doing towards these goals, when?
Well, when we get test scores coming in, then we'll have a presentation on the test scores. The new initiatives for this year, we have talked about all the school safety initiatives. As you can see in there, we talked about the literacy coaches and the response to interventions, all of the curriculum initiatives. We've already implemented them at the beginning of the year and we've made presentations to you along that way. We'll have hopefully results of the response to intervention program and the, you know, hopefully with the literacy coaches are doing, as you heard from Dr. Sorolamachia, that she will be updating us on that particular information. So what is highlighted in yellow especially, we have really made presentations to the board. We'll come back when some of these are completed, we have the stronger school things initiatives in there, we're putting that grant with the single point of entry, we have the reimagine grant on the dual enrollment and courses that we're offering. So we'll come back at some time during the course of the year and give you those as we get data from what we're implementing. Okay? Okay. Were there any other questions or comments or discussion? There being none, there is a motion and a second to approve the long-range strategic plan. Please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item is an approval of the results of the BID tabulation for 2023-24 student athletic And you have the breakdown in your folder. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? Motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Lemoine. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion or questions? Okay, there being none, please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Next item is an approval of the 2023-24 transportation rights. There was a recommendation by the committee.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Long. Seconded by Ms. Lee Bowman. Any discussion? I just want to say that our transportation department does a wonderful job of ensuring safety for our students and so we just want to say thank you to all the bus drivers and the, and the transportation department, y'all do an excellent job. Okay, any other discussion? Okay, please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Memorial Day and Juneteenth to be observed as non-working days beginning on the 2024-2025 San Fernando Parish school employee calendar. There was a recommendation by the committee and we did have a couple of people sign up to this top, this, this item. And first, we have Tricia Lacour.
How y'all doing? Good. The history of Juneteenth reminds me...
I'm sorry, can you pull the mic down a little bit?
Thank you. Can you hear me? Now we can. Okay, sorry. The history of Juneteenth reminds me of change in progress. It's critical that we start to address the need of Willie Smith's relocation. Has the board started with any plans to move the school?
I'm sorry, I didn't, we didn't... Could you repeat it, please? It's hard for us to hear.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear me?
Now it's better.
All right, sorry about that. The history of Juneteenth reminds me of change and progress. And so it's critical that we start to address the need of Willie Smith's relocation. Has the board started with any plans to move the school?
Okay. Just, this is just... Ms. Votche, yeah, this is just for you to, to... Comment on the agenda. Comment on the agenda item that's before us tonight, which is, which is the Juneteenth and the Memorial Day. You were asking about the Smith School, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay, that's not on the item, the agenda tonight, but we're going to discuss the Juneteenth and the Memorial Day holiday in just a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, we have Christopher Joseph.
My name is Christopher Joseph, I'm from Violet. And we, in the Violet community, we want y'all to know that we really do look to the school board for these tougher discussions like Juneteenth. And we really are here because we need to know in our community what is going on with Willie Smith School. It is really important in our community of what is happening with it, is it going to be relocated? And we look into the school board because of the leadership that y'all have in our community in these tougher topics.
Okay. All right, thank you, we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
And we're going to discuss the Juneteenth holiday in just a minute, okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So on to the committee item. So the, there was a request to add Juneteenth as a holiday and Memorial Day, which, you know, it was recommended at the committee meeting and that, that was the wishes of some of the board members. And in speaking to several of the employees, 12-month employees, that supervisors, principals, support personnel, they, they, they would, they would have a problem with Memorial Day or Juneteenth, but they didn't want to take away from, if we passed this, we would have to take away two days in their Christmas holiday or two days or maybe one day there or one day of Thanksgiving, a Mardi Gras or another holiday. And they, you know, they, you know, didn't want to do that. So I kept, we kept thinking and I've been discussing this with Ms. Votche and, you know, as to what would be a good compromise or a solution to where it wouldn't take away from the other holidays for our 12-month employees. They would get these holidays, but then what, what can we do that would, where they didn't have to take away from their other holidays that they would, they would like to have, like at family time and Christmas and Thanksgiving, et cetera. So I asked Ms. Votche and she's been racking her brains too, to think, and she came up with the... Actually, Mr. Morell suggested that to me. Mr. Morell suggested that, okay. So this is a possibility and our 12-month employees now work during the summertime 30 minutes, they get off 30 minutes early. So as opposed to taking away any other holidays, we will make these two days a holiday, but not take away any of their other holidays by asking them to work till 4:30 as they did in the past and that would equate to the two days. So Ms. Votche, if you want to further explain that realm, I think it's only what, four to six weeks they work the 30 minutes later? Right, it's about five weeks in the summertime and what we normally do is we call it summer hours and instead of leaving work at 4:30 each day, we allow them to leave at 4 o'clock each day. So I talked with our union representatives over here briefly before the meeting and asked how they felt about that particular swap-off, if we would go ahead and recapture those 30 minutes and do the two days, which are Juneteenth and Memorial Day. And they felt it was a good idea. Everyone who I have spoken with about it in the last few hours, we came up with this, has, have felt that that is a really good solution because they really did not, you know, want to give up other holiday times such as Christmas and Mardi Gras or some of those other days. So we felt this was a good solution, that we could go ahead and put those two days on our calendar as holidays and have that 30 minutes during this five-week period become working time again and that would be the trade-off. So everybody that I've spoken to about this has endorsed that concept, including, you know, our union representation. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Discussion or is there a motion on the floor at this time?
I guess I have discussion. So the way I understand it, we would be, you would, we'd need a motion to approve what was, what came out of committee, correct?
And to add to the motion.
And add to the, amend the motion.
Amend the motion.
That came out of committee.
Right, that we would make that Memorial Day and Juneteenth to be observed as non-working days beginning with the 24-25 school year and that working hours would remain the same during the summer.
Okay, it sounds like a fair, fair compromise. I'll make that motion that we approve it.
Okay. There's a motion by Mr. Long and a second by Ms. Lemoine. Any further discussion at this time? No discussion? And Ms. Votche, did you say we, the union has to vote on this or no? No, we talked with the leadership and they are fine. And they approved it? Ms. Robinson is shaking her head yes, she's fine with it since she's the incoming president. So we, we got an affirmative from them, a yes? Yes. Okay. Okay, any further discussion? There being none, please cast your votes. Motion passes 10-0. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Okay, next item on the agenda or items to be placed on the next committee meeting agenda. Ms. Harris?
So I know that we have had a lot of legislative items that have come out and one of the ones that I'm very interested in is Act 393, which would require an update to our board meeting policy to address, either to offer ADA accessibility and the opportunity to participate in the meeting for those who have ADA accommodations or a policy stating why... meeting for those who have ADA accommodations, or a policy stating why we do not provide that accommodation. So will we have that?
That is coming to you at the August committee meeting. We're already in the process of preparing that. We have policies that deal with that item, so we have to amend two or three of our policies, and they'll be coming to you at the August committee meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, I'd like to have on the next meet, no, to discuss the status of the Willie K. Smith School.
Okay. Okay, anyone else?
That was what I was going to say.
Oh, Ms. Rodney?
Yeah, I want to discuss, just start to talk about W. Smith Elementary.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, next item is superintendent's notes. Ms. Votchay?
We are just having a very, very, very busy summer. We completed last week the administrator in service that we call BetaFAST, and it was a very, very long week, and we all went through NIET training. We also did, trained another forty-two mentors through the NIET process, and they'll have mentor certification, which gives us many more of our teachers that can work with our new and incoming teachers. So that's been great. This week, right now, beginning, was today Tuesday, yesterday, all of our new teachers for the year have arrived. You know, I welcomed them in yesterday morning, and the rest of this week, they are spending it getting all of their information, being issued laptops, being taught how to work through the technology that we have in our curriculum and in our school system, and meeting with their level people as to the types of curriculum that they're going to be teaching, and working with the principals at the schools. So we're very, very busy with that. Our, all of our teachers will come back on Tuesday, August the first, and we will have, and our support people will come back on Thursday the third, and Friday morning, August 4th, we will have our opening at the Civic Center, Civic Center with all of our employees, and our students will arrive, one through twelve. Students will arrive Monday, August the 7th. I can't believe how quickly the summer goes. I'm sure for the kids, it didn't go that quickly. I mean, they would wish it would still. In fact, I think it did go quickly for them. For the parents, it may not. But anyway, so we will be back in school with our students on Monday, August the 7th.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Votchay, and all the board members are invited to the grand, the big opening with all the employees on...
Absolutely.
June 4th.
On Friday.
I mean, not June, I'm sorry.
Not June, August, I know.
August 4th.
Friday, August the 4th, at the Civic Center.
Right, at 8:30.
8:30, but please get there about eight o'clock.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Votchay. Okay, anybody else? Any questions? Okay, there being none?
Move with your...
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, the meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.